Welcome, everyone. Thank you for your flexibility. I'd like to call this November 4th regular Board of Ed meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did she have a little further than I thought? So, welcome. I'm sorry for the late start tonight, but we'd like to start off with our Tusker pride. And today, we welcome the High School Drama Club for the fall production of Almost Maine.
Wasn't expecting to be up first, but I'll be very brief. I know it's late. Good evening. My name is Bobby Upchannick. I'm the Choral Director at Somers High School and also the Advisor for the Somers High School Drama Club, also known as the Somers Theater Company now. So I just want to recognize and thank a few people, and then we'll be on to our students who have a little bit of a sneak peek of our show. So first, I'd like to thank you, the Board of Education, for your continued support of our performing arts programs. Your encouragement and investment in student creativity makes everything we do possible, so thank you. I'd also be remiss if I did not recognize the Somers Education Foundation, as well as STARS, for their continued advocacy and support for our young performers. I'd just like to take a moment to thank you, Dr. Bronstein, for your ongoing support of the Drama Club. Even back in the spring, before you were even the Superintendent, we had a conversation. You were in the audience for Mean Girls. And your presence means a lot, so thank you for that. I'm joined tonight by two members of our production team. We have our Technical Director Dana Roach, who's done an incredible job rallying our newly energized and passionate stage crew, and our Director Rachel Vetterman, whose steady leadership has brought a sense of calm and confidence in artistry to our rehearsal process, so I'd like to thank those. And then finally, we have two -- sorry, we have two members of our -- we have the President and Vice President of our Somers Theater Company Board, Fiona Sledzik and Mia Calderon-Mendoza, who will give us a sneak peek into our upcoming production of Almost Maine. So this time, I'd like to turn it over. Ms. Roach, do you have anything to say? Okay.
Hello, everyone. I'm Dana Roach. I'm an art teacher at the high school. I did not prepare a script like everyone else, but this is my first year being Technical Director or Stage Crew, Stage Craft. And so far, it's been an amazing journey. The kids have taught me so much. It's very intimidating going into it because we're using power tools. We have to build structures, and it's been going so well. We've built four different rooms for different scenes. Many, 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 many pine trees, fake snow, benches. Pretty much anything that you'll see outside, we built from the ground up out of just all the scraps that we had. So it's been an amazing journey, and I just want to thank you for your support. Looking forward for the -- to the coming years. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. I'm Rachel Vetterman. I'm a 4th grade teacher at SIS, and I am the Director of Almost Maine. It's my first year working with the high school students, which is really fun. I grew up my whole life doing theater and knew that, at some point in my educational journey, I wanted to bring that love that I learned from my teachers back into students. So I chose Almost Maine because it's such a creative, heartfelt show, and it really lets the students tap into a range of emotions and different ways of storytelling. And I heard that we had such wonderful talent in Somers. And the best part about the show, which the students will talk about more, is it's all vignettes. So it really does give each student their opportunity to shine and have their moment onstage as a star. And so, with that said, I'll pass it over to the STARS of our show, the most important part of why we're here, and they'll share a little bit more about it.
Okay, thank you. So we're so excited to be part of Almost Maine this year. So we just want to talk a little bit about what the show is like and about our rehearsal process in the show. So if we could go to the next slide in the camera. Okay, so an overview of the show is Almost Maine. As we said before, is a clever and touching play, and it is told through different distinct vignettes. And so each story takes place on the same night in a town, a mythical town called Almost Maine. And these short tales of humanity explore themes such as love, loss, and hope. And they all consist of about 16 characters, each with their own personalities and perspectives. So we're really excited about this play because we knew that a range of different students would be able to work together and have an equal part in the show. So we're really excited about that aspect of the show and having it be different stories that are all interconnected and tell different themes about humanity that we can all connect to together as one show.
Something that I would just like to add is that the rehearsal process for this, since everything is in its own distinct vignette, means that we aren't really able to watch each other as we practice and perform. So none of us have an idea of what any of the scenes look like and when they come to life. So when we're able to finally come together at the end to do tech, like do work with the tech, it's just an amazing experience to see how it plays out for everyone.
I don't know if there's like one or -- there's a couple more slides. Okay, so we have some overviews of the vignettes. I don't know if we want to go through all of them. What? Oh, yeah, we could just talk about each of ours, and then we'll go through, and we're going to act through the prologue just to give you like a little example because that's the shortest scene. So I'll just talk about mine for a second. So what's really special about Almost Maine is that there's a lot of symbolism, and this can be, like, honestly, very comical at times. So my scene is, it's called "Getting It Back." And the premise of the scene is that a young woman is going to her boyfriend, and she's saying that she wants it back. And by "it," she means all the love that she gave to him. And she says she has all the love that he gave to her. And she comes onstage with all these huge gigantic bags. But then, when she asks him to give the love that she gave him back, he comes on with just a tiny little box. And so it's just a very interesting metaphor that continues throughout the story. And so it's very creative and interesting the way that each of these stories work out with their different themes. And so that is one of the things I think is really exciting about Almost Maine.
I agree with that. I think that a lot of the scenes also have a lot of symbolism. Like, for example, my scene is called "Where It Went." And so basically, the plot of that is that me and my husband go ice skating with each other, and we can't find one of my ice skates. And the entire time, we're like fighting over like problems that we are having while also looking for this missing shoe or this missing part that we are both looking for and trying to reach at the end.
Yeah, so those are just two examples of the symbolism and like the extended metaphor throughout these short vignettes and how they really just tie into themes that are universal in relationships and in humanities. So those are our vignettes, and obviously, there's a bunch more. So that's something we really like about this. And should we go ahead and do the prologue? Yeah, because yeah. Okay. Yeah. A disclaimer: This is not our scene. We just want to give you a little example, and it's a good example. So we're going to try our best to portray. This is actually, yeah. Okay. Should we do it here? Yeah. Do you want to go out?
I wouldn't mind.
I think we should go out and do it. Okay.
And I'm going to be back, so. Pete, I
What?
I'm just, I'm having a nice time, Pete.
I'm glad, Gina.
I always do, you.
I'm glad.
And the stars are just, I didn't know you knew all that stuff. All this time, I didn't know you knew all that.
Well, it's not, it's just stuff my dad taught me.
Pete.
Yeah?
I love you.
I love you, too.
Oh!
Are you cold? Want to go inside?
No, no, no. I just want to sit, like this, close. I feel so close to you, and it's nice to be close to you, Pete. It's safe. I like being close, like this. I mean, I could think of other ways of being close to you, but that's not, I like this, right now. This kind of close, right next to you. You know, I think I'm just about as close to you as I could possibly be.
Well, not really.
What?
Not really. I mean, if you think about it in a different way, you're not really close to me at all. You're really actually, you're really actually about as far away from me as you could possibly be. I mean, if you think about it technically, if you're assuming the world is round, like a ball, like a snowball, the farthest you can be from somebody if you're sitting right, is if you're sitting right next to them. See, if I'm here, then that's far.
Yeah.
But now, you're closer.
Yeah.
And closer, and closer, and closer.
And that is the beginning of the prologue, and that scene continues throughout the show. That's the one repeated scene. So obviously, we're without props or anything, but that's one example of.
Great.
Thank you. And that's November 14th, right? And 15th? Thank you so much. I look forward to being there that weekend. Okay. So this brings us to our public hearing for the Districtwide Safety Plan 2025-26 Revised. A public hearing in a 30-day comment period is required when revisions are made to the Districtwide Safety Plan. The plan will be available for public comment on the district's website. Comments may be directed to Mr. Dan Carrato, Districtwide Safety Coordinator, via email at dcarroto@somerschools.org. The Board will be asked to adopt the revised plan at its December meeting. The changes to the plan are highlighted on Pages 4, 5, 6, 19, and 20. These changes were added as a result of the passing of DASHA's law dealing with sudden cardiac arrest. Okay. And that brings us to announcements on our end as trustees. We had a fantastic site visit at the high school on October 22nd, where we had the opportunity to focus on the multiple pathways offered at the school. During our visit, we explored the AP and IB programs, the arts, including speaking with students who attended the first Portfolio Day in our college presentation for Fine and Applied Arts, as well as robotics, Project Lead the Way, and even sat down to talk with BOSI students. I'm so proud of our high school offerings. The work put into creating these multiple pathways for students puts us in line with the upcoming graduation measurements, but more importantly, offers all students a way to find success and be ready for the world, which I think is at the core of everything that we're doing. I look forward to a debrief of that visit at the next BOE meeting. And I also want to just take a moment to thank Liz Turner and Tara Kearns, our Directors of Learning and the high school team. Their hard work was evident as we, that we all saw that went into it. Let's see. Additionally, Dr. Bronstein and I attended the NISBA convention last week, which proved to be a very valuable experience. It was a great few days filled with informative sessions and opportunities to connect with colleagues from across the state. I've been gradually rolling out my notes from the convention so far. I know it's kind of slowly been trickling. I'll share even there's, I think there were some Student Board member presentations, too. I'll make sure to get out to you guys. And I've also shared some relevant insights with respective administrators, including highlights from an engaging session on project-based learning, which I thought was really interesting. Tonight, I'll ask for a motion to pass the Personnel Agenda. I just wanted to take a moment to highlight a remarkable group of educators who are retiring after dedicating many years of service to our schools, our students, and our community. It's my privilege to recognize and celebrate the careers of six outstanding teachers: Jennifer Colletta, the 5th grade teacher, 29 years with us; Lynn Stupkowski, AIS teacher at SIS, 29 years with us; Diana Campora, Special Education Teacher at the Middle School, 28 years; Allison Janey, 1st grade teacher at Permost, 30 years; Christine Velez, SMS Science Teacher, 27 years; and Kim Laurie, 1st grade teacher, who's been with us for 30 years. Together, these educators have contributed more than 170 years of service to our district, a testament to their dedication, professionalism, and love for teaching. The impact they have made on countless students is immeasurable, and their legacy will live on through the lives we have that have, they've touched and the colleagues they've inspired. So on behalf of the Board of Education and our entire school community, thank you and congratulations on your retirement. You'll always be a cherished part of our school family. And I also wanted to take a moment to highlight the appointment of Deana Miller as the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources and Student Services, effective January 1st. Deana's been with Somers Schools for more than 20 years. And over the years, I've had the pleasure of getting to know her as a parent in the district, serving on various committees with her, and as a PTA leader, and now as a trustee on the board. And Deana's commitment and dedication to our school district is invaluable, and I offer my heartfelt congratulations as she embarks on the next chapter here in Somers. And that's all I have for tonight. So Dr. B, I don't know if any of the trustees had anything else to add or turn it over to Dr. B?
All right. I'm going to first turn it over to Ms. Plotania for any items on the business consent agenda that he wants to draw the Board's attention to.
Just a couple of items just wanted to point out. One being the acceptance of the audit report for the 24-25 fiscal year and the acceptance of the response to the management letter. We're also going to have one of the auditors here to present tonight on how that report went and show some of the numbers in just a little bit. And then the other item I just wanted to point out was a contract with Student Assistance Services. The contract that's on the agenda tonight is for the portion that is paid from the Drug-Free Communities Grant that they cover a few days of the Student Assistance Counselors. We're in year eight of that grant, so it's been very helpful in funding that, not to be confused with the budget transfer that's at the end of the agenda, where we're transferring money from the General Fund, where we covered the rest of the Student Assistance Counselors' costs previously, but now we're going to move that money over to BOSI's. There's a new co-sur available through there, so now we'll be able to generate some BOSI's aid off of those costs as well.
That's always good news.
Yeah. Thank you, sir. So I want to echo Ms. Candell's mention of our retirees. So I, too, want to congratulate Jen Colletta, Lynn Stupkowski, Diana Campora, Allison Janey, Christine Velez, and Kim Laurie on their retirement. I've gotten to know you all over these first couple of months, and I look forward to celebrating you at our retirement ceremony, which is in the spring. So I'm very excited to really, really reflect on all of your contributions to the district over many, many years. I also want to echo what Amanda just shared about my recommendation that Ms. Deana Miller be appointed as Assistant Superintendent of the Somers Central School District in Human Resources and Student Services. I have only gotten to know Deana for a few short months, but during my time getting to know her, she has shown herself to be highly capable and frankly, critical to the school district in her current capacity as Human Resources, but has held many, many different roles, as I've learned over many years within the school district. And I couldn't think of someone more deserving of this promotion. So I want to congratulate her and frankly, the school community who will benefit from her skill and talent over many more years. So congratulations again, Deana, on this new role. I also want to mention that I regularly meet with our PTA Council, which is sort of the liaisons from each of our schools from the PTA. And I meet with them on a regular basis. So last month, our theme when I met with them was around parent and community engagement, and specifically, had the opportunity to introduce Allison McCaffrey, who is our new Public Relations Coordinator, to the PTA Council and really connect them with one another because she will be instrumental in promoting all the great things that our PTAs do on behalf of our schools. And so just simply want to echo our thanks to our PTAs for everything that they are doing. I also was blessed to participate in our Halloween festivities last week. In particular, I got a taste of the SIS Parade for our 3rd grade students. They were quite creative, as were our faculty and staff with some of their costumes. So I can't wait until next year, even though we have a whole nother year to wait, but that was quite exciting. Yesterday, I was down at Primrose, and we had the annual "We Deliver" Post Office Ceremony for our 2nd grade students. And that was quite an oppor-- do you remember doing that, by the way, when you guys were in 2nd grade? Okay. I figured you'd remember. Do you guys remember that? Okay. So we've got a couple of our performers who recall that. But that was quite a nice opportunity to discuss the importance of the mail and the responsibilities that our 2nd graders have in their, you know, roles that they'll have, whether it's as a courier, or a carrier, or a postmaster. I was quite impressed by everything that they are doing and will do over these next several months as they carry out the roles they've been appointed to. And I also want to thank our administrative team, who all participated in interviews to ensure that our 2nd graders were well-prepared for these important responsibilities. I also want to congratulate all of our Fall athletes as we wrap up the Fall season, and thank as well Tommy Albano, who's our Athletic Director, for his commitment and helping guide and usher our teams over these last several months. We do have three sports that are still competing, including, hot off the press, a victory by our boys volleyball team. We may or may not have a parent of one of the members in our midst. And so that's, as I understand it, the most successful season they've had yet. And so we're really excited for them to continue on in the sectional process, in addition to our football team, which competes again this Friday evening against Harrison. It's a home game. And then our cross-country athletes are also still competing this weekend. Next week, we have our Meet the Coaches Night for our winter season, which will be getting underway very soon. And then a couple other things. We have our United for Troops Dress Down Day for our faculty and staff, in which we acknowledge and recognize all the contributions of our military. And that dovetails certainly with next Tuesday, which is Veterans Day, so there is no school. But I hope everyone takes time to recognize and honor the contribution of our armed forces. And I'm looking forward to the Dress Down Day on Friday. And then, of course, I want to thank our student performers and those who are leading them for coming this evening. And I can't wait. I will absolutely be at Almost Maine next week, so I'm very excited to see all those vignettes in person. Thank you so much.
Great. Okay. So that brings us to, hold on, our first set of public comments. Is there anyone here who wishes to make a public comment on agenda items? Okay, I didn't think so. All right, then we'll roll into our Central Office Report, where we have our annual audit report.
So tonight, we have Jeff Shaver coming up to speak on the audit. Jeff Shaver's a partner with O'Connor-Davies. He'll kind of run through the process that him and his team do for the audit and then review some of the overall numbers that they help prepare in the financial statements. Jeff?
Good evening. Thank you for the introduction, Chris. Again, my name is Jeff Shaver. I'm a partner with PKF O'Connor-Davies. Happy to be here to present the results of the audit for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2025. I'm going to take you through a high-level overview of the audit and then get right into a summary of the General Fund and show you your debt service that's outstanding. And finally, I'll finish off with some of the other funds of the district. So first and foremost, I'd like to state we've issued the Independent Auditor's Report that accompanies the financial statements. I'm happy to report we've issued an unmodified opinion that's sometimes referred to as a clean opinion, and that's the most favorable opinion that the district can receive. What that means is the financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects. There is also a report on internal controls over financial reporting. That report's required by government auditing standards. In that report, we'd be required to tell the reader if there were any identified material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in your internal controls. I'm happy to report that none were indicated during the conduct of the audit. That's also a clean auditor's opinion. I'll just point out that there is normally a report on compliance for each major federal program. Also, sometimes we refer to that as the federal single audit. That's on hold as the federal compliance supplement hasn't been released. As soon as that becomes, you know, as soon as that document becomes available, we'll be able to finalize the federal single audit and file that with the federal government.
And Jeff, that's for all districts that you audit?
Yes, that's not specific to Somers. That's all June 30th and forward year ends are currently on hold for federal single audits. We've also issued a separate extra-classroom activities report, as required by New York State. And we've also issued the report to those charged with governance. Sometimes we refer to that as the management letter. Chris is presenting, I believe, some of the action plan in response to some of the comments that we had. So some of the key things that are in that document, I'm not going to go through all of them, but we talk about auditors' responsibilities. And auditors are responsible for forming and expressing an opinion on the financial statements. Management is responsible for fairly presenting the financial statements in accordance with the United States' generally accepted accounting principles, including the selection of appropriate accounting policies. Management's also responsible for establishing and maintaining effective internal controls. I'm happy to report we didn't identify any management override of internal controls or improper revenue recognition during the conduct of the audit. We didn't, we did not encounter any significant difficulties, and we had no disagreements with management. The audit went very smooth. We had full cooperation from the finance team. We'd like to thank them for the hard work they put in and the cooperation we received. So here you see a snapshot of the General Fund revenues and expenditures compared to the budget. You'll see there's five columns on the slide. First column being your original budget. That would be as adopted by the voters and the Board, with the only changes to that original budget being open purchase orders automatically carrying forward into that original budget. The final budget encompasses any board transfers or amendments made during the year. Third column would be actual revenues and expenditures. The fourth column is encumbrances or open purchase orders as of June 30th, 2025. The district has committed to spending those funds, but hasn't yet received the goods or services. Those will be spent down in next year's budget. And finally, the variance is the difference between the final budget, actual last-year encumbrances. So you can see on the top line, from a revenue point of view, the original budget called for 109,220,000 of revenues to be collected, while the actual revenues were 110,410,000, some 1,387 greater than what was anticipated to be collected. You achieve that in various categories. Sales tax distribution that comes from the county, about $100,000. Tuition charges to other districts, about $130,000. Interest income, 582,000, and state aid, 136,000. In terms of appropriations or the expenditure side of the budget, the original budget calls for 110.5 million of spending, and the actual expenditures were 106,229,000. Savings or positive variance of 3,933,000, representing about 3.5% of the budget. So I like to say, in another way, you've spent about 96.5% of what you anticipated to spend in your, you know, your original spending plan. So you've generated budgetary surplus on the revenues and expenditures, a total surplus of, budgetary surplus of 5.3 million. Keep in mind, when the budget's adopted, surplus is utilized to balance the budget. So if you collected every dollar in revenues you anticipated to collect and spent every dollar you anticipated to spend, your fund balance would come down by that appropriation of fund balance. In your case, it would have been 1,930,000. In your case, it would have been $1,930,000. Because you did better than your budget, you didn't, your fund balance did not drop. It actually increased, and that number's $3,767,000. So the general fund fund balance starts the year at $16,753,000, ends the year at $20,521,000. So this is a five-year history of the fund balance, the detail, the details of what makes up that $20,521,000. And you can see the vast majority of the fund balance of the general fund is in the restricted category. So these funds have been set aside and can only be used for these specific purposes. So you see the largest of the restricted category is tax surcharge, your tax surcharge reserve at just over $8 million. Employee benefit accrued liability or employee payouts when they leave the district, $234,000. Retirement contributions, just over $4 million. That's partially for the employee retirement system invoices and partially for the teachers' retirement invoices. And future capital projects, just under $2 million set aside. That is a voter-approved reserve, and it also requires voter approval before reducing it or taking it down and actually spending it. So that's $14.3 million of your fund balance. The next category is assigned. The first item is purchases on order or encumbrances. Again, the district's committed to those contracts for goods or services, and the $384,000 will be spent in the next year. And the amount for subsequent years' expenditures is the amount used to balance the next year's budget or the '25, '26 budget, and that amount is $1,250,000, which is the same amount that was contained in the '24, '25 budget. Keep in mind, some of, in addition to the $1,250,000, some of your restricted funds are also used to balance the next year's budget, and that number is coming from your retirement contribution reserves, and that's $438,000. And that's also the same number as the previous year. And what's left over in fund balance is referred to as unassigned fund balance. Sometimes I call it the residual. It's the difference between the total fund balance less all your other categories, and that amount is $4,539,000. New York State limits that amount of fund balance to be no greater than 4% of your subsequent year's budget, and you're currently at that limit. That's the $4,539,000. Next slide. Summary of the debt that's outstanding. You can see there's bonded debt outstanding, $26 million. This is as of June 30th, 2025. Energy performance contract debt, $7.7 million, and some finance purchase debt of $921,000. Total outstanding debt, $34.6 million. The bottom of the slide shows you what the payment streams will look like over the next five years and in five-year increments thereafter. You can see in terms of your bonds, $4.2 million in principal will be required to be paid down this fiscal year, '25, '26, and $641,000 in interest. Next slide. So I'll just summarize by going over some of the other funds that the district has. These are the funds other than the general fund. The first is the Special Aid Fund, where the district accounts for state and federal grants. Normally, you don't expect to see any fund balance left over in there as it spends funds. It receives reimbursement dollar for dollar. The Capital Projects Fund has $1,526,000. Those are funds that are already voter-approved and sent over to the capital projects to be spent. It's just the money has not been spent as of June 30th, 2025. The School Lunch Fund accounts for the operations of the school lunch program. Fund balance there of $356,000. The Special Purpose Fund is kind of like a catch-all type fund where many other miscellaneous items go in there. Your extra classroom activity funds are accounted for in the Special Purpose Fund. And finally, the Debt Service Fund, that's a mandated fund, and those amounts can only be used to offset debt service costs in the future, and that amount is $258,000. That's a summary of your other funds and your general fund, of course. Those are the slides I had prepared for this evening. If anybody would like me to go into greater detail on anything in the financial statements, I'd be happy to do that or try to answer any questions that the board may have.
Jeff came last week to meet with the audit committee to go into it a little bit deeper of detail with them. So we met, and then obviously now Jeff is here just presenting a very high-level overview of everything. Assuming the board approves everything tonight and accepts the audit, everything will be posted to the website probably tomorrow, in case anyone wants to do some light reading over the weekend.
It's an exciting booklet. I think, you know, based on what you said, everything, we couldn't have asked for a better audit. So thank you to Chris and his team for getting all that information, and thank you for presenting it. I don't know if anyone has any questions specific.
Why are you looking at me?
Well, I have to, I want to look at, no, I want to look at both sides. I'm looking at both sides of the table here.
I will admit that I had to look up one of those terms during this.
I think for the, just for the benefit of the public, when they do look at this over the weekend, when you state that there's a qualified opinion, that's really the, that really means everything is fine.
Unmodified opinion.
Unmodified.
Yes, yeah. That mean, yeah, it's, that's the best opinion you can receive. The financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects. I like to also add that it doesn't mean your numbers look good, but it also doesn't mean your numbers look bad. It just means it's accurate, and it's a fair presentation of your financial statements. So auditors don't say, yes, you're, yes, you know, in the auditor's opinion, you're doing well financially, you're doing poorly. They just say, this is an accurate depiction of what actually happened and where you stand financially.
Thank you.
And it's overall, it's a good thing that we're, that it sounds like Chris has been accurately, I guess, budgeting for things that we're using 96.5. I mean, if we're that close to the, to the budget numbers, right? I mean, that's what you're saying, too, so.
Yeah, I mean, you're coming, your budget estimates are, you know, you don't want to go over, especially on the appropriation side, that becomes a problem. So you don't want to be too low, because then you have surplus that you can't retain, excess surplus, really. You certainly don't, you don't want to be, you don't want to be the other way either. You know, you kind of have to find yourself in a sweet spot, if you will. Most districts that we audit fall in that, you know, 96, 98% of their budget they end up spending, and that's okay as you're budgeting to use some of that surplus every year. So you need a little bit, you want a little bit of a cushion there to replenish that, to not decrease your fund balance. Because if you weren't doing that, your fund balance would be going down every year, and eventually you would run into financial difficulties.
Great. So anyone have anything else? All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And thank you, Chris, for keeping our books in good shape. So now we have the capital project update. I know you gentlemen are here tonight. Chris, you want to do those introductions as well?
Sure.
I don't butcher anyone's name.
Yep. So just coming up, we're just going to give an update on our capital project that the voters approved back in May. So in the audience, we do have Chris McCartney here, our Director of Facilities, who's been playing an integral part in this process. And then coming to present tonight, we have John Hanson from Triton Construction and Mike Lantier from H2M Architects and Engineers.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, members of the board, community. As Chris had mentioned, my name is John Hanson with Triton Construction, joined by Mr. Lantier, Michael Lantier from H2M. Pleasure to be here tonight. I would like to just go over just a quick overview of where we've come over the past few months, you know, where we're headed in the next few months, and just do a quick recap. So really quick, just wanted to kind of reintroduce my team and just show the district of who Triton Construction is and kind of what we do across the overall project for the $63.9 million bond. From the left to the right, we have a number of team members. Teddy Sabukis, who's our VP of Estimating, is engaged on all the estimating that we perform throughout the course of the project. As Michael and his team produce drawings, we review those drawings and provide updated analysis with those drawings, with updated information that we receive from projects in and around the lower Hudson Valley, right? He has a team that works with him of two to three estimators that are solely based in just the K-12 education market. To his right, to the right is Kevin Sawyer, who's VP of K-12 Construction. He'll be here. You might have seen him on a previous event or two prior to tonight. Myself, John Hanson. Frank Arturi, who's the dedicated senior project manager. And then Sidney Barella, who is the assistant project manager for the team. Our goal here for the district, just to recap what the district sets out with the construction manager to do, is to oversee the project in totality and make sure that all the players are performing what they're supposed to perform, and ensuring that we maintain the budget that we set out to maintain and the schedule that we look to maintain for the district. Doing that while you being able to maintain your academic process and schedule is the number-one goal, also keeping a safe and productive site throughout the course of all of that. So very short summary of what we do, but can unfold into a lot more. Mike, I think you want to give an update or introduction of your team?
Thank you, John. Thank you, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here and continue to work on this capital improvement plan, which we've been putting together for some time now. The team on the background is really shown on the screen right now. This is our, more of our leadership team. I'd like to say that this is everyone involved, but realistically, we probably have about 30 different architects and engineers that are consistently working on all the projects across the different phases that we'll run through. It's been a pleasure working with the team. We continue to meet, it seems, multiple times a week at this point to go over really all the different aspects. On the screen is just myself and my team of senior architects and senior engineers, some familiar faces that you would see around the district. If we can go to the next slide, just a really high overview, I include this one on really all the presentations, just who we are. H2M has been working specifically in Somers since about 2017 now on a number of different projects. We worked on the Safety and Security Bond, some of the athletic project at the high school and the elementary school, and a number of other capital improvement projects along the way. Basically, we're considered a multi-disciplined architectural and engineering consulting firm. It basically just means we have every type of architect and engineer that can really handle this type of work. This district's being served primarily out of our headquarters, which is in Melville, also our Suffolk office and our Westchester office. We can go to the next slide. I typically just include this really as a reference, just to get an idea of the scale of the size of the buildings that we're looking at. You know, roughly, you know, most of these buildings at, you know, at 80,000 square feet, they're about 50 times the size of a residential house, give or take. And then on this slide, we just have some of the years for reference. You know, some of the buildings are approaching, you know, 90 years old, and that just kind of reiterates why we're going through this capital improvement process. So just as a reminder of where we landed with the summary of all of the project costs, in May, the voters approved to proceed with the project at $63.9 million. This is a rough breakdown across the schools. There's some flexibility between the schools as costs come in to slightly shift some of that value around as needed, based upon actual construction costs, but that total value at $63.9 million is the maximum amount that the district has been authorized for these So we'll run through really just a very high summary of the projects and the phases. We were able to break down with the work of Triton and the district and kind of just looking at coordination and doing our best so we really don't impact any of your existing conditions. We broke it down really into three phases. The Phase One is part of the smaller of the phases. The breakdown of the phases also has to do with the availability to borrow money with existing debt falling off, so that kind of dictated what projects fell first, along with very specific priority projects that the district has. So at a very high level, and I can answer any questions we may have, but Phase One at the elementary school includes playgrounds, interior doors, the entrance canopy, and then stone wall replacement and repairs around the building. At the intermediate school, Phase One includes playground and interior, the art room, cabinetry upgrades or casework upgrades. We've included the middle school, the fire alarm system, HVAC upgrades in the gym, and then a new sign, a digital sign out front. Over at the high school, a priority project was replacing some existing boilers, the LED for the, for Turf One and Turf Two, as well as your press box and then your existing track replacement. The next slide, I'm sorry, just on this slide, we just have a star that there are some user group meetings that are happening on some of the key items where we do need some input from the district, and those meetings are ongoing. So moving on to Phase Two. Phase Two is actually two slides because it is...
Could you just tell us what the timeline is for the Phase One? Like, I know it's, that's obviously the first one, but like timelines, how does this fall in the timeline?
Absolutely. So Phase One, we are getting to the point of completion with the design, and then after the design's completed, it goes to the State Education Department for permitting. Perfect timing with this slide. So we do anticipate to go up to the state in December. The State Education Department should have the permit back within two to three months, which then would line us up for Phase One for bidding in the spring and then starting construction summer of 2026.
Any idea about completion?
Do you remember offhand completion for Phase One?
For Phase One construction?
We say October, I think it's in here.
Yeah, so we have, there are a number of components.
Yeah, October.
Yeah, if I can, so there are a couple of components that have lead time, fabrication lead times with Phase One. We're trying to hit a number of critical items that you have, or higher priority, not critical items, with Phase One, i.e. boilers at the high school. There are some items, obviously, with your track and field. Those have lead times associated with them. We are targeting the summer of 2026 to take advantage of anything that we can do outside of the academic school year and also the athletics schedule. But we do understand that there are some things that have six-month lead times here. So by going up to the state in December, not having a permit back until, say, February, March, we want to give us enough time to install those things and not impact on your academic schedule. Some of those things may be boiler replacements, as long as it's outside of your heating season, or mechanical improvements that do not interfere with your academic schedule, right? And then obviously being creative with the other phases of how we're going to perform that work while you still maintain your academic schedule throughout the school year by performing $63.9 million worth of work over the course of the next three years. So this schedule just really is an illustration. The next slide has a little bit more detail in regard to the phase submissions. So Phase One is there, obviously going up to SED in December of 2025, with a construction start in summer '26, and then completion in October of 2026 for that scope of work. I'll just continue for right now, and we'll go back to the actual independent scope. So for Phase Two, which Mike will discuss just in a minute here, we'll go back to those slides. Subsequent to the submission for Phase One or the permitting submission, we are looking to go to the SED by July of 2026 with construction start over the summer of 2027. There is some work that we, along with the field in the back of the middle school, that we believe will happen throughout the school year. We are planning that workout, and as Mike and his team produce drawings and we start to get our hands on what actual work and go through user group meetings and get feedback of what actual scope is going to happen with the overall project, we will start looking at the independent logistics, staging, and the more finite detail of the schedule for both Phase Two and Phase Three. And then Phase Three, a little bit smaller package, Phase Two being the largest of all three. The team is looking to get up to SED on January, in and around January 2027, with a construction start of summer 2028 into the fall of 2028 completion. All right? So that's spanning over three years of construction in totality.
And these are all anticipated schedules as of today.
We've all done construction. I mean, no respect to either of the gentlemen, but let's face it.
Holding you to these days.
There's a plan. And then there's a frost, or there's a shortage, or there's something, and that's just life. Nobody would ever think that this was set in stone because the stone would need six months to be ordered. So we understand that things take a while.
And, you know, I'd love to say that we haven't, you know, that we're out, we're in the clear with, you know, what happened, you know, five years ago or so with lead times and so on. Unfortunately, with things like mechanical equipment, electrical equipment and so on, we're still seeing long lead times with some of those items. Electrical equipment still has the demand of a lot of your photovoltaic systems and a lot of, you know, your charging stations. There's still that need that's out there. So we're trying to be as generous as possible, but be realistic, and also not, you know, too, you know, not too unrealistic with a shorter schedule. So we'll jump back into some of the scope of Phase Two and Phase Three. Mike, I don't know if you want to take it back.
Chris, is that backfield in this?
Yeah.
Turf for this backfield here?
So the schedule, the high-level schedule that we presented does include, you know, some contingencies built in, so we do at this point still feel that it is a conservative, realistic schedule to complete all of the work that has been approved. So then, really... has been, that has been approved. So then, really moving on to the phase two work, uh, which we've included uh at the elementary school, um, we're gonna be doing the, the fire alarm, electrical upgrades, uh, weatherizing your building, that's uh some, some roofs and some, some, some of the facade. Again, some HVAC upgrades, uh, bathroom upgrades, flooring upgrades, windows, and then uh some, some upgrades within your water service uh equipment. Moving on to the intermediate school, uh, there's uh a, a site work, that's uh parking lots, asphalt walkways, that's really across the district, but that's uh spread out between the three phases. Again, stone wall replacement, HVAC, fire alarm upgrades, uh, some outdoor learning spaces upgrades, again, building weatherization, windows. Um, uh, there's a, there's a railing that needs to be upgraded, some bathrooms, uh, floors, ceilings, and doors. A lot of this uh work that we discussed previously really is infrastructure related, so you're gonna see a lot of it across each of the, each of the schools. Uh, moving on to the next slide, which is the middle school for phase two. Again, it's that building envelope, the weatherization, uh, some roofs, windows, electrical service upgrades, again, your site work, HVAC, uh, classroom upgrades, uh, specifically the ca- kitchen faculty bathrooms in this school, and then door upgrades as well. Uh, moving on to the high school, uh, we do have HVAC, uh, actually the next bullet point, which is fire alarm. We did uh very recently decide to move that up to phase one. It didn't make it in time for this presentation, but uh the high school fire alarm actually is, is uh more of a priority uh to move that one forward. Now, we're also doing electrical service, uh, electrical panel board upgrades, uh, weatherization, building envelope upgrades. Uh, that rear uh exterior ramp for the, for the upper gym is being replaced in phase two. More flooring, flooring and ceiling replacements, bathroom upgrades, again, windows, doors, uh, numerous classroom upgrades, kitchen freezers, and uh, well, actually, the freezer, uh, walk-in, both of the walk-ins, refrigerator and the freezer, and then we're doing gym and locker room upgrades as part of that phase two.
Is that both gyms in the high school?
Um, that is, that is not. It's um the lower locker rooms uh for the, for the gym were, were, and the upper, uh, the upper gym, we're doing some minor uh upgrades within uh with some of the walls. I believe it was the curtain and uh another, I forget which uh component, but there was another component included as well. Then as we move on to the final phase, which is, which is uh slightly smaller, is uh starting off with the elementary school, the classroom upgrades, and then, and then the site work would be completed at that school. Uh, at the intermediate school, again, electrical upgrades, classroom upgrades, and then your uh potable water tank replacement. At the middle school, it's again, site work, your outdoor learning spaces, classroom upgrades, and then uh LPG is liquid propane gas. There's just an older uh liquid propane tank that's uh in need of replacement. And then at the high school, again, site work, some retaining walls, uh auditorium upgrades, uh, some classroom upgrades. I'm sorry, and we have auditorium on there twice now that I'm realizing.
I was gonna ask if we were getting another auditorium?
I mean, that's why the drama club is here.
That's right.
Yeah, financially, I don't know if we can handle two upgrades to the auditorium. Um, and then there is some work, some minor work at the, uh, at the transportation facility in the back of the high school. That includes upgrades to the uh bus wash and then to uh some site work for some asphalt work and then uh surveillance CCTV system upgrades.
And I'm assuming part of this phasing too is because of how we have to structure the debt, how it comes on and off from the old debt, right?
Yep, exactly. There's certain amount that we can, certain amount, certain amount of work that we can do and a certain amount of money that we can borrow. This way we feather it all in.
Right.
To make sure we time it right.
Yeah, as we were prioritizing the work, we looked at the, the, the debt service falling off and then also the, the actual physical work prioritization to see how we can fit it all together. Um, did you want to go through any of the last phasing? Did we talk about these? I don't know if we did.
We did. We, so we went over phase two and phase three. So, a couple of things that are um not on here, we're just keeping it very high level. So, uh, we, we have engaged the team in monthly reoccurring um owner, architect and CM meetings. We call those OACM meetings. That's where we get the group together and make sure that we're keeping on track with our design submissions and our SED submissions. Uh, those meetings will continue throughout the course of the project and uh up until completion. So, it's a high-level meeting where we discuss trajectory and, you know, completion of, of, of different milestones of the project. Um, throughout Triton uh is engaged with the district on a monetary basis and also a schedule basis. Uh, and will continue to provide updates in those forms of schedules and budgets throughout the course of the project, um, helping along with the financial goals of the district uh for their financial milestones for the debt services. Aside from that, the design team is also continuing with their user group meetings. Uh, they've actively engaged. I think there was one actually yesterday, uh, or earlier today, I'm sorry, uh, a user group meeting with SIS in regard to the playground, uh, and will continue to do so until we send the submission to uh SED, uh, and everybody's happy. Um, again, reiterating that phase one SED submission is happening by the end of this year, just before the new year. Uh, in the spring of two, twenty twenty-six or at will or at any other point, we will come back to the board and provide an update. At that point, we're hoping to have the SED permit in hand for phase one and have a really good update for phase two completion and design um at that point. Uh, and then, um, what's also not shown here is just the, the continuation of phase three and so on. So, uh, I think, Mike, what's really important to, to broadcast here is, uh, even though there's three different separate phases, your team has been in all of the building doing backgrounds and sur- uh surveying for each of the phases to date. I do want to reiterate to the team, we saw a lot of information that was up there on the, the past phasing slides. Uh, this is a pretty invasive project uh throughout the course of uh the next three years. It's not a simple addition that we're putting onto the side of a building. Uh, coming up with uh phasing plans with each individual building and talking with the administration is gonna be our number one goal, you know, throughout the phasing portion, aside from security. Uh, because there's just a lot that's going on here. We're looking at doing a lot of paving and site work upgrades at all of your buildings and impacting every building at some point. Uh, we've looked at that so far so that we have access to each building throughout the course of the summer and that we don't have to shut down the entire district um over the course of the summer, which we know is impractical. So, a lot of uh planning needs to go in to make sure that, number one, we put these contracts together right, so it's a cost advantage to the district and that it's also feasible uh schedule for us to uh maintain throughout the course of its completion. So, uh, Mike, I don't have anything else to say. If we go to the next slide, just any que- just any questions? More than welcome to answer.
Just on a security standpoint, who vets the people that are gonna be working in the schools?
Okay, so, um-
They're gonna have access to-
Yep.
-pretty much everything. So who, who does the vetting?
Yeah, so majority of, uh, majority of your work is happening throughout summer, uh, throughout the summers. We're, we're outside of academic hours. Uh, that being said, uh, we use the same programs that the district has in play, place for visitors and so on. So you have a, an existing raptor system uh that flags if there's any certain criteria for that person not to enter the building. Um, you know, to have that same access as a visitor. Uh, that being said, uh, we, there are certain, you know, there are certain legal uh things that I, I can't say today about background checks uh that we're kind of limited to, but uh, you know, everybody thinks we're going through a full background check of a person and making sure that, you know, they've paid all of their credit card bills over the past few mon- that's not the case. It's more or less the same system that you use uh to vet a person to access your facilities uh onsite. Uh, if there is a, if there is a project that extends through the academic year, our goal is to separate faculty, students, occupants from the construction workers. Uh, if we find ourselves in a place that we cannot do that, we might look at different hours or, you know, performing that work during different months of the year that you're not occupied. So, the goal is to keep a separation, at the end of the day, between students, faculty, uh, construction workers at all times.
Thank you.
Alright. Hopefully that wasn't too multifaceted of a response. Anyone else?
Anyone else? I look forward to it. I mean, there, there's a lot of wor- I feel like all the buildings are always occupied. I don't know. Like, maybe that's just a feeling I have, but um, like even throughout the summer, especially the high schools. So, I don't know. I look forward to seeing all the-
It's going to be challenging and we're gonna need a lot of uh, uh, support from the community when we're experiencing some, like, you might not have access to certain fields at certain times or certain parts of the building, and it's just, that's the only time that we can get all this work done. So, we, we appreciate everyone's understanding, um, but in advance-
No, I mean, I think we just have to be upfront about it. No, it's, you have to be upfront about it. It's, that's what's gonna happen. Like, the paving alone is gonna be-
Yeah, I mean, I've said it's gonna be a logistical nightmare to get all of this done. I know, um, John and Mike have been thinking of the work that's going to be happening, and it's keeping them up at night and to get it all done, but um, we're all gonna work together to get it all done. It's just gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna be a lot of work and a lot of uh time for people.
Right, it's, it's like Roz mentioned earlier, we've all been through construction projects at home, and, and you, you put up with it so that you have a better product at the end, right? Safer, more, uh, a, a learning environment that's more conducive to learning.
I just want to thank Chris and uh Chris McCartney as well, who's in the audience this evening, and John and Mike for all their uh great work on this thus far, and I participated in all those meetings that they referred to. Uh, and it's wonderful to see the collaboration and everything that uh is going into this effort. So, thank you.
Yeah, and it was great with one of the user group meetings that we had today with the playground at SIS. They uh showed us some possible designs, which they did incorporate from uh some of the drawings that we got from SIS students at the end of last year. So they, they took all that feedback and they'll put it into, into some renderings. So it was nice to, nice to see, and we'll, we'll, we'll share some of the, the updated renderings after, you know, some of the um feedback we gave tonight or, or this afternoon to them, and we'll share that with um student council uh whenever we have that.
You should go to one of the town hall meetings too at, at SIS, right?
That's where we're gonna, uh, actually, that's where we're gonna, that's where we're gonna share it with them. Yep.
Cause I, right, don't they do those still at a monthly basis? Um, great.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay.
Thank you guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Acceptance of warrant reports, statement of revenues, treasurer's report, budget status report.
Still moved.
Nope. No need to. We're just, we're just accepting. We're just accepting. Okay, now get ready. Resolved that the Board of Education, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, hereby approves the attached personnel agenda.
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstain? Uh, the business consent agenda. Resolved that the Board of Education, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, hereby approves the attached business agenda.
Still moved. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Oppose, abstain? This brings us to our second public comment period. If there's anyone who has joined us who would like to make a public comment on general school matters, uh, don't think there is. Um, so that'll just move us along to our final comments. I know this meeting was a little wonky this evening, so I appreciate everyone's flexibility. Um, and just to say that we had a flip-flop about the workshop versus regular Board of Ed meeting because of the audit report. Um, so you guys will have your report during the workshop meeting next time, but we'll, we'll just, we're gonna find a rhythm at some point and it'll go with the flow. And that's when we'll have our community reports back, um, and things like that. And um, just, I'm excited for the, the football team, the boys volleyball team. Um, I think these are all great things that are happening, and um, and now winter season is quickly upon us too, so.
Anything?
Um, sure. How about congratulations to the drama club and thank you to the high school for once again recognizing that there are numerous ways to succeed. I think one of the hallmarks of our district is recognizing and celebrating different pathways. And I'm sorry I missed the high school site visit, but I'm looking forward to hearing about that. I also want to take a moment. There are so many phenomenal, amazing educators in this district, but two who are retiring right now or at the end of the year demonstrated kindness to my family, and of course, that's going to stand out, but that's Ms. Janay and Ms. Kalella, and they both really emphasize, as do so many leaders in our district, that perhaps we can do no great things, but we can do small things with great love. And I think that that is something that comes through in so many different actions that happen in our district, in the classroom, outside the classroom, on the sporting fields, on the buses, and in just in, it encompasses what our district is. And of course, many, many congratulations to Ms. Miller. This is gonna be an exciting stage for our district, and it's always good to see when talent is recognized.
Yeah, so Theater Performers, thank you for coming out, giving us a sneak peek of what you have in store for us. Uh, good luck to all involved. Uh, congratulations to Dina. Well deserved. I'll also, congratulations and good luck to the volleyball team, the football team in, across country. And thanks, Chris, for uh audit report and project updates. Thank you.
Yeah, I echo congratulations to, to Dina Miller on her promotion. Also to the retirees. As, as I think you all know, I, I had the great fortune of, of working for a couple of years as an ad hoc substitute here in the district, and I worked with Ms. Janay and, and Ms. Lori and Ms. Kalella and Ms. Tukowski, and I was in classrooms with them um as part of a, part of what I did on a, as an ad hoc basis. And they're wonderful, wonderful educators, and we're gonna miss them very much, wish them all the best in their retirement. Also, congrats to Chris and the business office for the clean audit. That's, that's always nice. And uh, thanks to John and Mike for updating on the bond project. I'm also looking forward to, to seeing Almost Maine, and uh, best of luck to the football team, volleyball team, and cross-country teams as they push forward and hopefully continue for as long as possible and to extend the fall sports as long as possible.
Okay, so um, we're actually gonna pop into our executive session now, so if, if the board's amenable, it'll be not too long. But resolved that the Board of Education goes into executive session to discuss the employment history of particular persons.
Still moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstain? Okay.